Okay, being 6:31, I call this meeting of the Manchester by the Sea Select Board to order. Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Here.
John?
Here.
And Anne is here. The first item is public comment on non-agenda items. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items here or on Zoom?
So I'll start us off with a want to recognize Sergeant Newton for his effort and along with the Manchester Police Department and Harbinger Master Department. On Thursday during a routine patrol Sergeant Newton noticed that there was a sailboat with five teenagers on it taking on water. They were in distress and immediately responded and helped bring those teenagers to shore along with the sailboat. So just wanted to recognize Sergeant Newton for, yes Sergeant, who couldn't be a 90, feeling too well, but it was a job well done by the officers in Harvard Master.
Yes, excellent. Excellent job. Please relay our thanks. Outstanding. Okay, the next item is the chairman's report. There is no chairman's report tonight. The next item, that's if we take up action items. Does anyone have additions or changes to the action items?
Another question. Today's, the target date for today was also the North Shore Regional 911 review. So I was just wondering when we were going to have that discussion.
Yeah, you can go ahead and say that.
I spoke to Allison from Regional. They were unavailable to come in tonight, so, but they will get back to us on the other day.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for water rates. Do I have a motion to enter to open a public hearing?
I move the select board open the water and sewer rates public hearing.
We're in the discussion. John?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes. Okay, is Chuck?
Chuck's on the call.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So what's in front of us today for the updated, for the proposed rates for fiscal year 2026 is a $18.25 per 100 cubic feet on the sewer. This is a, represents a 7% increase. Last year was, the last fiscal year was a rate of $17.06. The 7% increase coincides with the three-year plan of steadily increasing the rates for costs associated with the sewer treatment plant. So this is year two of that. The sewer only flat fee is $142.70 per bedroom per quarter. Prior year was $133.36. Again, this represents a 7% increase. On the water rates, there's no change to fiscal year 26. So the, the rates will stay at $7.21 per 100 cubic feet for the first 1,700 cubic feet used, $8.14 per 100 cubic feet for 1,700 to 5,700 cubic feet used, $10.80 per 100 cubic feet for 5,700 to 16,000 cubic feet used, and $14.18 per 100 cubic feet for 16,000 plus cubic feet used. And then a sewer capital for Chuck, correct me if I'm, step in here if I'm misreading this, but then there's just the, is the volumetric rate structure?
That last one is a capacity fee for connections when people add new bedrooms or there's some other connection that's made to the system within the existing service area.
Okay, so that's $17.50 per gallon, which is total gallons per day determined by Title V flow ratings. One bedroom rated at 110 gallons per day times $17.50. So it's $1,925, which was previous.
That's a one-time fee.
One-time fee. Previously, this was at $1,650, but it's been unchanged since its inception.
Are there any questions on the board?
How, what percentage of households are on only sewer, no water?
There's only about 10 accounts in that category.
Small.
Very small.
But that's all your people that have private wells but are still connected to the town sewer.
Right.
And actually, over the last few years, a lot have actually bought a water meter from us because we will bill them on the volumetric rate if they have a meter. And so they'll basically buy the meter to make sure we're accurately charging them except for the 10 or so.
So after the new meter program, how many do you think we'll have without meters? Or will they?
It'll still be the same 10 unless they decide at that time that, you know, they're willing to put a meter on their well line.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Chuck. Chuck, I was just wondering, how you model the, the monies that are coming in for the future year, fiscal year 26? I know that you've got water revenue going up now. We're assuming there's no change in the billing. There were some of the billing changes that occurred mid-year here, I know, associated with the water meter. Are there other factors that go into that?
So are you talking about just the water side or are you looking at the sewers?
Just the water side, just the water.
Right. So what we, what we've been looking there is the past four quarters of revenue and then we're forecasting that against our, you know, fiscal year 26 cost. So that's, you know, budget that was just approved, you know, we're into now as of July 1. And so that's what I'm looking at there. The additional revenue for the capital fee on the meter side is really going to pay for the meters. So, you know, you recall, we did approve a bond and
Right.
all of that for, for that side of things. So that will basically, that extra money, if you will, in the enterprise fund will go directly towards that, so.
All right, yeah. So that's not a net number. That, that would be a, a separate.
Correct. We're really just looking at the operations at that point.
All right. So you're looking at the trend the past four quarters and just kind of straight lining that up?
Uh, yeah, you know, it's hard, more hard to sign sometimes because the, you know, dry air versus white air type stuff really makes a big difference on our revenue, but just looking to make sure that, you know, we do have a certain amount of reserves in the enterprise on itself, so, you know, not looking to bring that to zero, but not letting it run up too high, you know, so.
Well, I just wondered, I mean, from '24 to '25, the revenue went down, but I do recall, I think it was, there was rally shoes, and now it's gone up quite dramatically.
Right, but so have expenses due to inflation and capital costs and stuff like that, so, you know.
And not, not looking at the expense side, that is kind of a standard trend.
Right, right. So that's kind of, you know, what we're trying to just hit it.
Anyone else? Is there a move to close the evidentiary portion of?
Say it. I move that the select board close the evidentiary portion of the hearing.
Second.
John?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes. Okay.
Like a motion to approve the rate? Okay, I move that the select board approve fiscal 20s, fiscal year 26 water and sewer rates as presented.
Second.
Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Anne says yes. Okay, the next item on our agenda, our appointments to, to committees, interviews for important committees. I understand that Miranda Gaudet is not available.
She had a family emergency.
Yeah, so we will put that on our next agenda.
Yep.
And the next candidate and candidates are for the Facility Planning Committee. And I'd like to start, I changed the page, looks better, with Matt Bergeron. Yes. And what, what I, what we, what we like to do when we're having these interviews is give you a few minutes just to explain. You've already given us a fair amount of information, but we'd like to hear why, what you think you bring to the Facilities Committee.
Sure, yeah, Matt Bergeron, I'm nine forest man in Manchester, Mass. I have experience in the construction building facilities area within, throughout my career. And I also a resident of the town, which is important. So I feel I'd be a good fit for the Facilities Committee due to my construction experience, experience with DPW operations and other aspects of construction and land and property. So I feel like I'd be a good fit for the, for the role.
Thank you.
Sure.
John, do you have any questions for him? From Matt?
Uh, yeah, Matt, I just wondered, have you served on any town committees in the past at all in this town or in other towns, or is this your first for it?
No, this is my first, first time, so I'm eager to, to get involved and help out the community the best I can.
Good, good. Have you, have you spoken with or know any of the other folks that are, especially the appointed ones, the appointed ones in the various committees that are on, on this committee that's being established?
No, I don't know who the other candidates are.
Okay. Well, I'm not talking about candidates from, that there are, from four existing boards, there are people that are on this committee, including Kathy Bellotto, who's on our, our select board, but just wanted to see if you've been in touch with any of those folks.
I have not.
Okay, all right, good. Well, I thank you for raising your hand for this. This is a new committee, so that means you can be filling away a little bit, but it's very, very important with what's coming up in Manchester over the next, say, 10 years or so, a lot of activity in this area. So thanks very much.
Yeah, I think it would be interesting. I'm, I'm happy to be involved.
Yeah.
Great.
Kathy?
Yes, Matt, this is Kathy Bellotto. Thank you very much for stepping up and volunteering. Could you elaborate a little bit on your, you say you have construction experience? Is it in the project planning, engineering? You know, could you elaborate a little bit on what types of facilities or buildings you may have been involved with, what your role was?
Yeah, majority of my experience is in the project planning, management and actual construction of buildings, civil construction projects, as well as transportation.
Could you just give us a couple of examples?
Yes, we, I have been involved in additions to buildings, commercial buildings. I've been involved with ground-up construction of commercial buildings and also utility infrastructure for those buildings as well, water, sewer, electric, gas, project management and actual scene construction through to the end, end of the project.
So were you the project manager or were you part of a team, you know, part of a team that reported into the PM or, just trying to get a sense as to scope?
Yes, part of, part of the team, part of the team that reported, yeah.
And was it anything locally? Is there anything that you can name that we might be familiar with or any building that we might recognize or?
No, it wasn't anything local in Manchester. There was a few projects in Danvers, Mass, Danvers Industrial Park, they were private buildings. Beverly, Mass, there was a few private contractor buildings as well, nothing municipal or building-wise.
Mostly it's like for private entities, commercial, like you said, commercial real estate.
Correct.
Sounds good experience, thank you.
Sure, no problem, thank you.
Brian?
Have we determined how frequent we're gonna meet, we're gonna meet? Have we kept that far into the?
I think that's the, that's the, the committee will have to decide.
So, I mean, you're prepared to make the, it's a time commitment, obviously, and I mean, I don't know if you're going days, nights or whatever.
We don't need, we haven't had yet.
So you're flexible as far as timing goes in case that, you know, some, a lot of committees meet during the day? Is that something that's gonna be a problem for you if you still are working?
No, no, I'm pretty flexible.
I think Chuck has his hand up.
Okay, Chuck, please.
Yeah, as I was just saying on that one, Brian, you know, I don't think we've made any kind of decisions yet. I was hoping to kind of get a feel for, you know, who the people are around the committee and then, you know, I think it will be a couple times a month to get going, but then, you know, after that, I think, you know, we'll just kind of see where we're at and, you know, what, what needs our attention and how often, you know?
Yeah, not great.
I wasn't sure.
I think this guy's pretty much gave me the shakedown, so I'm pretty good. Thank you for stepping up.
No problem, happy to be involved.
Have you dealt with Chuck Dammell?
Have I dealt with Chuck Dammell?
Yeah.
Yes, I have.
Okay. I'm sure he'd let us know if he was unhappy. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, the next candidate is Joseph Begon? Yes?
And Joe's fine, so.
Joe, okay, sorry.
No, no problem at all, no problem at all. So just a little bit of further background, I guess, you've, you've seen, seen the resume. I primarily kind of functioned over the years in transportation planning, permitting, providing support, you know, usually as a technical lead, as part of a multi-disciplinary team. Certain types of projects, I would be the lead for that and have team reporting up through me. I am currently retired. I sit on the pedestrian and bike committee and I also serve on the MassDOT Board of Directors where I chair the capital programs.
John?
Yeah, so I, I, I look at your background, Joe. You've done, done quite a bit since you retired. That's, that's a big plus in this instance because there needs to be certain amount of flexibility in, in working in this. Have, how long have you been on the Bike and Ped Committee?
Uh, I think it's about three years now.
Okay, so you know what, kind of volunteering for this service involves and you're, you know, you're interested in expanding that horizon and getting into a different, a different area. Have you chatted with anybody who's going to be on this committee from the various committees, you know, committees or Chuck?
Uh, I've talked with.
Kind of like the Pigeon.
Yeah, I've had a conversation with Chuck. I haven't really talked with Kathy, but we do talk because Kathy is generally at our pedestrian bicycle committee meetings and that's why.
Yeah. Okay, all right, that's, that's good. I know that, oh, I can't remember. I think Gordon Booster's there, Andy Oldman, I'm, I'm sure of all the, the folks that are designated to be on this committee that'll be forming in the next, next few weeks. Well, great, I think you've got a, a strong background in terms of management of fairly large projects, as I can see on your listing here. So I'm sure that we can tap your, your, your wisdom and expertise. Thanks for going on here.
Uh, you're welcome and thank you.
Kathy?
Yes, I'm obviously familiar with Joe from attending the Bike and Ped Committee. Joe was instrumental, I'll just mention, and he was the lead on getting the speed limits changed for the, those state roads that run through Manchester. And so what I appreciate about, appreciate about Joe in particular is his ability to get through, he knows how to navigate the state, he knows how to work through permitting issues as well. I think that could be a valuable skill set on this, on this particular team as well. Could you just talk a little bit about your responsibility at Harvard? Sounds like that was a slightly different role than, than what you did for the, on the other projects for the state, or was it similar as a consultant?
No, it was different. You know, my career started working for the city boss, so I was there for about 10 and a half years and that was in the policy and planning group with the Transportation Department. Then I did, stepped out consulting for about 12 years. Harvard was different. I came onboard as part of a team that was charged with doing the development in property that had been purchased in Austin. So I was the subject matter expert on transportation issues and doing permitting and planning. Over time, that morphed a little bit because as people left, I picked up different responsibilities. So that, towards the end, I was also charged with doing some of the facility master planning. I, the types of projects I worked on there, I don't know if you, how familiar are the area, but there's a new science complex down there. That's one of the projects that I worked extensively on. I was responsible for design work. When I say I, I was responsible for managing somebody who actually did the work on the, developing the, you know, the roadway infrastructure, the bicycle infrastructure, all, you know, all of that. And then also planning out the A-Gridge for the Enterprise Research Campus. So that involved identifying, you know, developing new street grid, identifying where utilities could be located, navigating over, you know, some fairly substantial public facilities that were in there.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you for volunteering for something else, too.
You're welcome.
Brian?
Kidney? I got nothing. Thank you very much for stepping up.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yeah?
Yeah, thank you. You have a great resume and speaks for itself, so, thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
If he's endorsed by all the rest of them, what can I say? Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, I'll do my best to look out for that. Appreciate it.
Okay, the next candidate is
Will Doucette.
Will Doucette? And he has a letter, is he online?
Will, are you on the call?
Don't think he is.
Okay. Yeah, I guess that is the end of our committee. Thank you all both very much. I think it's important that we speak to everyone we appoint.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So why don't we put off a decision until next meeting?
Yeah.
And, and would Debbie and
Try and track down Will and see if he.
Track him down and
Yeah.
get him in.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is, well, we've deferred the appointment of committee members and Debbie, you'll make note of that and make sure you don't forget it next time.
Yeah.
Quarter of the review with the police chief.
Moving right along, time.
I try and do that. Well, I'm missing two of the interviews.
Yeah, that's true.
Feeds it out a little bit, yeah.
I saw you have my memo right here again. It seems like another quarter just keeps ticking away, time keeps ticking away, so. Running out of quarters here, too. Yeah.
And it's gonna be a half a dollar next time.
So we've done a lot of work with our regional shelter plan that's finally coming to the, the final phase. We did a public safety awareness video over at Gordon with the, with the assistance of a few decker over there. That should be coming out shortly. One of the other things we did this last quarter is we had a hazmat tabletop exercise over here at the Legion with the KPM Regional Emergency Planning Committee. And we'll have, gonna have a regional hazmat plan out of that table talk, so that's a work in progress. I know there's been some concerns and issues about parking enforcement, but I brought up the, the new staffs today. Our parking enforcement has, has an expanded role pretty much this year. The numbers, you know, reflect themselves. We're, we're expanding up Pine Street, Outbridge Street, School Street, all the town municipal lots, up to Raymond Street, White Beach and, and et cetera. The safety sticks are, are working pretty well. They've, we've had some vandalism with those two or three times, however, DPW has been able to just come out and stand them back up. And the municipal parking solutions has, you know, confirmed that they're still working. So things are progressing with that. Let's see, harbor enforcement, we've stepped up some evening hours due to some increase of calls for service for some alcohol-related issues after, you know, in the evening after regular business hours. So you probably see that out, out there as we saw Sergeant Newton had a successful assist the other day. And his efforts have been pretty good all summer long as he's the one that's assigned out there with, with Andy and, uh, bye. Lieutenant McCoy brought him tonight because he just recently completed the two-week 18 module program of the Five Star Chiefs Executive Institute through the FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Association, so that's a huge plus for him. And also, community policing keeps, keeps going. We've had the end-of-year ice cream social. Chief McNally and I had coffee with the chiefs at the Laugh and Golf. We just had Public Safety Day down at Baskin-Home Park with the Parks and Rec. We had state police, K9s and the mounted unit there, so that went up very well. Officers participated in the Special Olympics Cruiser Convoy to Harvard University to support the Special Olympics. There, they presented some of the athletes with some medals, you know, that they won. We had senior care meals on wheels breakfast that we, that we attended. And we had our second annual softball game against Essex, the police and fire. We won again, thank God.
I would hope so.
Yes.
He wouldn't have mentioned it if they had.
He drew the injuries.
We had no injuries this time, thank God, but I just want to shout out Sean Mullins, Officer Mullins, and firefighter Bill Sicola, that they did a phenomenal job with putting that together. And we raised, I think, about $1,400 for the Rockwood Fireman's family that passed.
We plan on having another one in the fall.
Yes.
That's cool.
So that was a really good time. Other than that, things are progressing and, and moving forward. Any questions?
Would Lieutenant McCoy just give us a brief outline of what you learned at the?
So it was a two-week 18 module, as the chief said, budget administration, public and private partnerships, officer wellness, how to put a officer wellness program together. It was very intensive. There was a lot of crisis, control and media relations. So it was pretty great class. And I think just being around 35 other law enforcement executives from 13 other states and just blending in, doing a lot of group work really helps. Great program.
Sounded very meaty. That's great.
John?
Yes, thanks, thanks for the report, chief.
I read through it and after hearing your, your discussion of it, I mean, I'm particularly impressed with the community policing initiatives that you've got going. You've got quite a few on the list, I realize, in summertime. And that's an opportunity to take advantage of that. So I'm impressed that everything is, is going along well and, um, and, you know, I see you, I'm, I'm around town, not this week, but I'm around and I see you up and about. And in particular, I've got to say that with regards to Sergeant Newton's fast action with those sailors last week, I think that brings home the point that our public safety staff is out there 24/7. And his fast action, the fact that he is out there, and it was great that he happened to be there at the, at the right time and made the right decisions to, uh, to help those kids out, but it reminds us all that you're always there.
Yep, yep, thank you. One thing I did, I forget to mention Daisy, that's been out and about. She's, we have the corporate sponsorship program, so she should spend her time with the Atlas Marine.
Jeff?
Yeah, great report. I'll echo what John said, really pleased with the community policing. You guys have a long laundry list of stuff. It's, it's fantastic. And also, I appreciate the, you know, the increased parking enforcement. I can certainly see them walking up and down Pine Street every day, you know, it's great. I did have a question about, you know, we've received some feedback about White Beach and stuff like that. Could you, like, what's, what's the expectation? So White Beach doesn't have a, you know, like a big parking lot like Singing. What, what can residents expect?
So years ago, when I was a parking enforcement person, White Beach, Parks and Rec, we're in Baskin-Home Park too, we're staffed with personnel, like a parking.
I see. Okay.
So that, due to budget reasons, I don't know why, and the change from the police department to the Parks and Rec, that is obviously no wonder. So what we do is parking enforcement, they'll do, depending on how busy it is downtown, two or three times a shift, they'll, they'll go down there. But what happens? People see them. And they get their cars.
They get their cars. And then they go back.
Tickets and, and then they leave.
So it's hard to catch.
And they circle by Ocean Street and then come back.
Got it. Okay, so it's hard to catch.
Obviously, you can't be there 24/7, but if people have complaints or sees them, I suggest that they call.
Okay.
I do that as well.
What? Yes, we know you, but everybody knows your car, it's you drive.
I might just move it back as far as...
Okay, so it's the, it's the loop.
But a lot of it stems from people used to years ago have that parking. I mean, that beach attendant or that parking attendant.
So is there, I guess what I'm wondering is, because when I drive through, I always drive through there when I go to Gloucester, it's just a nice drive. I haven't yet seen it full, but it just may be the time of day that I go there. So is there a specific time when we know that there are lots of folks there possibly violating or...
They tend to go first thing in the morning and then probably around lunchtime or a little bit after and then before they go.
Okay.
Which is...
Maybe a regular schedule isn't the best...
Well, that's maybe, yeah, it is. But again, that, that varies.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would definitely suggest changing it up. And I think, you know, like you said, it's always about the money. So it's, you know, what is the value of having somebody there from, you know, monitoring the stickers like Parks and Rec does at Singing Beach? Is it worth having a part-time employee there during the summer? I don't know, but no one's ever presented a cost to me, so I don't know. I don't know why we're not doing it. Maybe it is too expensive, but I've never seen the number. So as we're going into the budget planning season, it's something to take a look at and residents can vote yes or no. I have no idea how much something like that would cost to... Because you're right, if it used to be done, residents who have lived there for a long time are probably thinking of that and...
To that point, we used to remove snow every day. Budgets being where they are.
Right.
You know, I, I look at it a little differently. I, I think that we should be concentrating on the downtown area. We're looking to turn over parking spots for retailers. And when they're up on either side of town, they're not turning, uh, not enforcing. People aren't gonna see that. Because I know if I don't see someone there, the guests, Nike pull in, I've got three or four out because they haven't made it up this way and they're still in that one there, right? So I, my preference would be that, yes, it would be nice if you could swing by the other areas, but I think if we're trying to improve and make downtown business more viable, then we have to turn to the spots.
Oh, yeah. No, I agree with that. I guess my point was, it sounded like, because they don't, they're not the guardkeepers at Singing Beach, it's Parks and Rec.
Well, it used to be the police.
It used to be the police, okay.
Yeah, and then it got turned over to Parks.
And I wasn't sure if there could be a Parks and Rec employee watch, you know. I don't know if that's...
I don't think Parks and Rec can give a parking ticket.
They can't give a parking ticket, but they, but they can.
Because our parking enforcement people are, are non-res...
Oh, they're civilians, that's right. So...
Absolutely.
Because I think the concern isn't so much turn in that other areas, not turnover of spaces so much as the perception that alcohol plays a large role in the people who are there for extended periods. Whether or not, you know, I don't have any evidence one way or another on that, but that's the perception. So I just, you know, I'm just in general in favor of if we're going to have a sign that says residents only, we figure out a way to enforce it. You're doing the best you can with what you have right now. And I don't know if there's any other solutions, but something we should talk about or take down the signs.
Chief, you've also let me know earlier, there's, there's been about thirty or so tickets written in that area.
Yeah, twenty-four, I saw on the chart right here.
Okay, and, and, you know, and I was...
Since parking enforcement started, yeah.
So you swing through there, what, a few times a day or...
Yeah, two or three times.
Saturday, Sunday?
They scurry around and...
Yeah, and the officers will swing through there to, obviously, you know, but can't be getting people mostly on...
I don't know quite how to do this, but perhaps during the budget process, we should get Parks and Rec and the police together, talk about how best to enforce parking at the other beaches and, and... Brett? I noticed Debbie's writing down, and you.
No, but the report is great and I think it's just, you guys are doing great. And I'm really pleased to see the emergency preparedness. Everyone's coming to an end and look forward to those PSA videos. Thank you.
Hopefully soon they'll be up.
Congratulations on you and your team on another great quarter. Glad to see Lieutenant McCoy get through his FBI training. That's great. My other question, how many hours are you on the water?
Forty hours a week.
And what is that?
Sometimes more, depending on the weather.
What, is it eight hours a day or how do you...
Eight hours a day.
Every day?
And we, what we've been doing is we've been starting the shift. So one of the things, one of the benefits now that Andy is a certified police officer, so he's been changing his, some of his hours to come in at like two o'clock and work till ten. And if we have the third person scheduled for the four to midnight shift, instead of manning the, the front desk, that person's been going out with Andy. And with the, with the option of them being able, obviously if something happens on the street, they, they... That's kind of what we need to do for those extra folks.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank both you and, and Keith and Bailey for coming in and rescuing me when I required help. The emergency responses here are just really hard.
Very good coordination, communication between all three of us.
And they're very competent and, and, and very willing to help you with some things that I didn't want to look at. So, thank you. Thank you all. Thank you.
Just also, chief and lieutenant, thank you for spending some time with me. You know, showing me around the facility and introducing me to your team. You guys clearly have a very good crew. And certainly, you know, the, the facility element of it is, is a hot topic for us because that's, um, definitely poses a lot of challenges. And then, and we talked a lot about, you know, emergency management and how important that, you know, element of response will be when, you know, storms or, you know, disasters come. So, you know, constantly, uh, departments like ours are being asked to do more with less. And you guys are, you know, making the most out of, you know, being as efficient as possible with the budget that you have and obviously getting a lot out of it. So, uh, thank you and look forward to continuing to work with you guys.
Well, we need to do the tour around town when I get home.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Zach Johnson does a great job on as far as community policing goes at the, uh... There's already a little bit of a concert. There's two concerts this week. Yeah, so, I mean, he's out there engaging with the kids. And John and I just got his badge sticker last week, so I'll do that. Fish taking it off. Thank you, guys.
See you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The next item is the review of the fire department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, so the last quarter was very busy for the fire department, both call volume-wise as well as training and interviews. We had firefighter Kenyon resign and take a position with the Salisbury Fire Department. And we had, thanks to some pre-planning, we had the ability to have a hiring list in place. Firefighter George Black started actually this morning at 8:00 a.m. And he came over from Gloucester, he's a full certified firefighter and paramedic. So he was gonna be doing a week of days and then he'll be assigned a group starting the end of next week. We had the ability, and it helped us both budgetary-wise and training-wise. We had the ability to utilize our regional training grant with Essex in order to offset some of our training costs. So that allowed us to create some budgetary money at the end of the year that we're utilizing to do some minor station renovations to help us potentially in the future, if we hire a diverse work staff, the station will be ready for, or potentially ready for that change. The other things that are kind of going... What is it?
Does that translate to a women's dormitory?
It translates to some partition walls. It's, you know, minor modifications to, you know, meet a short-term objective. The station still needs some significant upgrades long-term. And that's one of the things I noted in my report is kind of having a direction when we look at our boiler system, flooding situation and things like that, knowing, you know, are we looking for short-term fixes for the next five to six years? Are we looking to, you know, push that out to fifteen or twenty years? And just so we kind of, we're physically responsible in our upgrades to the station and fixes. So obviously, that's a much larger discussion that we're currently working on, but that's certainly on the, one of the top priority items for me, is making sure that our facilities can maintain and support our staff for our responses. Equipment-wise, our ladder one during some pump training had a pump failure. The manufacturer, Rosenbauer, has been very responsive. They're replacing the entire pump. It's actually set the ship from Australia, I think either this morning or tomorrow. And it'll be put in by the dealer in Plainville. They've also agreed to start the warranty from scratch from when we take delivery of the truck. And they've also had some promises built into, you know, if something happens in the future, they're gonna take care of that and extend the warranty as well. So they've been very responsive, fire trucks, as in everything in life has become very electronic. I'd rather pull a lever, actually feel a lever pulling instead of, you know, talking to a computer system. But that's not the world we live in now. So they've been very responsive and I've been very pleased. Engine one had some significant electrical issues at the end of June that we were able to rectify. But that is certainly coming to the end of its life as a frontline pump. It can certainly be used as a backup, backup pump, but it's getting very tired. So I'm hoping that that will hold and maintain us until the new pump comes July 1st of '27. And we're still borrowing a Linfield pump. They've been very, they're building two new stations, so they don't have the ability to, to house it. So they've let us borrow it. And then while our ladder trucks have been out of service, Beverly has allowed us to borrow their ladder two. They will be taking it back this Thursday as they have some scheduled maintenance on their primary ladder trying to move forward. Any questions on equipment or stations? All right. Grant-wise, I heard that we are very likely to get our SCBA grant, which is great news. That's gonna be in the tune of high 100s to low $200,000 worth of SCBA and potential fill station. We have applied for a SAFER grant, which would bring our staffing up to five a shift, but we've dropped a four-man minimum. And then there's some, you know, discussions we can have about staffing long-term during attrition and things like that. Obviously, you know, hot button topics are the fire that happened in Fall River and the wildfires. One of the things that, you know, I've said time and time again is, you know, we're an insurance policy for the town. And the difference between four people working and three is if there's no life hazard, three people can't go into a building to put a fire out, we have to stay outside. If there's a life hazard, then the three people will do what they have to do to make a difference. But if there's four people working, we can always go in, two in and two out, to hopefully mitigate a situation. So that's kind of the difference. Obviously, we don't have a facility like they have in Fall River, but we certainly have large square foot homes with significant dollar value with life value. I recently submitted a grant to NIRAC in hopes of upgrading some of our portable radios to current standards. And then public outreach, we've had great success in public outreach. And then in the fall, we'll be back into the schools and the elderly housing complexes to do safer, safe programs and senior safe programs. And then our lockbox program has continued to flourish. And we're gonna be looking at doing a house safety check for the elderly, looking for trip hazards, seeing if they have safety bars in the showers and trying to mitigate any significant injuries before they happen. And lastly, I just want to, you know, Todd had mentioned, but the working relationship between police, fire, harbor master, DPW, and honestly, all the town departments is second to none. You know, the success, the success that we have is based upon all of us working collaboratively. And I couldn't be happier with the working relationship that we have. And I finally took a vacation at the end of June and Captain Cavender stepped right up. And it was a seamless transition while I was gone, so I just want to publicly thank him as well.
Jeff?
Yeah, it looks like another great quarter. I have a question about, um, you have call fire, you have some interviews scheduled. What, what is your call fire quota?
Uh, so we have six slated spots in the call department. Firefighter Cicalla was brought up to the full-time department probably two or three months ago, so his spot remains open. And within budgetary constraints, I'm looking at potentially adding a seventh position because we have a couple of people that are in town that are interested in the call department, which I think that we should grab their enthusiasm. We will have to send them to the Call Ball Academy, so part of their interview process, we're seeing what their availability is for the Call Ball Academy. Over the years, the training requirement has drastically increased, which has kind of slowed recruitment process of the call fire vendors.
Great, thank you.
John?
Was that me?
Yeah, that was you.
Yeah, okay. Couldn't, couldn't quite hear. Yeah, chief, I want to congratulate you, a very, very smoothly running machine you've got there now. Looks like the quarter went very, very smoothly. And in particular, you're, you're anticipating what your personnel issues are going to be. And in particular, you're, you're anticipating what your personnel issues are going to be and lining up appropriate people to do what, uh, needs to be done to, uh, uh, provide a seamless service for the town. So, I don't have any specific questions, just the observation that, uh, I'm glad to see that things are going very well. Congratulations to you and your team.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll echo that, um, Chief. Great report, um, really pleased with, um, like John said, though, like you got a crystal ball, you're doing really well planning for those, uh, um, attrition situations, whatever they may be. So, thank you for that. I did have one question around, um, you know, we talked a lot about the, um, brush fires the last, I think the last time we, we reviewed, um, had this conversation. And, you know, there was something posted on Facebook last week about concerns with powderhouse people setting fires there. And, um, I know you said you had cleared some of the brush in some of the wooded areas. Can you give us an update on whatever fire prevention, um, efforts you have done? Because it is, it's getting toasty out there and, you know, a drought is probably soon coming and I think it's a valid concern that the residents have.
Yeah, certainly. Uh, so early in the spring, uh, the crews have been doing, uh, wilderness training. We actually did a combined evolution. We had a simulated patient who's had an allergic reaction, um, actually in powderhouse woods. And we, you know, kind of did a comprehensive training exercise where crews had to use GPS, our technology that we've instituted through our first new program, uh, regional dispatch to find the person, um, and treat the person. And then during that, we've also gone in with, uh, during ATV training exercises and checking, uh, would access the fire roads. They used to be able to, you know, um, accept a pickup truck with a pump. Now, some of them have, uh, become a little narrower, but we've made sure that our, uh, SKID ATV unit has accessibility. The K-Ban, um, Wilderness Fire Prevention, I'm gonna mess up the acronym, plan. Uh, basically, the next round of that is to look at high hazards and see if we can do some mitigation of, uh, the forest and, um, areas that are considered a high risk to thin the forest and, uh, reduce the risk. The crews are up there, uh, practicing, uh, and training out there and making sure that we have access to the woods. We'll be doing some public service announcements as well. And then kind of coupled with what, uh, Chief Fitzgerald said is one of the things from the fire department is being 24/7. So, uh, between police and harbor, they've done an excellent job of having water coverage, you know, eight AM to ten PM. But, you know, God forbid something happens in the overnight, um, you know, that's where we're all gonna be coming together. So, we've been working very closely with, uh, Bayon and Andy in the Harbor Masters office and, uh, the police department in order to make sure, my goal is to have two boat operators on duty, uh, on each group. That way, if somebody's off on, uh, PTO time, et cetera, we have some redundancy there. So, 24/7, there's a boat operator on duty, uh, to be able to respond. So, we have been looking at those high-risk wooden and, um, marine potential emergencies.
Thank you.
I don't know, I just, uh, everything could say has been said. And I said this probably every time we do this every quarter, that I think that our public safety and DPW, oh, you know, is, is second to none. And I'm sure that there are a lot of small towns and small communities that would envy what we have right now here. And that's attributed to you and, uh, Chief Gerald and Harbor Master and Chuck. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Chief, I'll just echo what I said to, um, Todd, is that thank you for, uh, welcoming me to the team. I was able to spend some time over at the fire station, uh, and get introduced to the facility and to some of the members of the team. And, you know, what everyone has said so far has been said to me ten times over about, uh, all the work that you and your team do. So, um, looking forward to working with you some more and, um, and again, uh, you know, the facility there and the direction that the chief's looking for from us is a, is a real need for us to kind of get our hands around and make some important decisions here. So, I'm glad he brought that up.
Um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The cohesion among the public safety departments is really, really nice. Something that has not always been here and it is good to see it.
And, and, you know, one other thing I'll mention is, you know, we don't do a lot of, uh, PR on our medical response, uh, just because we're kind of, um, our hands are tied with HIPAA laws and things like that. But, you know, the response between police and fire to, uh, we've had some significant medical emergencies over the past quarter. And that seamless response, um, like you guys have said, is second to none. It has nothing to do with me, it has all to do with the staff on the road at the police department and the fire department, but, uh, they do an exceptional job and it's something sh- uh, surely to be proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, wow. Uh, he has all updates. John, did you have anything?
I, I just probably have one item dealing with, um, the seniors, council on aging. Um, the friends had a meeting, they have a meeting every, uh, Monday morning. And I know that, uh, K-Ban Trend was supposed to come by, uh, this, uh, this morning and orient people on the new service that will be starting during the first week of August. Uh, you do need to preregister if you're gonna call them so that they just have as a matter of record who you are. And they were going to, uh, some people have already done that, but more of a going to sign up. And that will be Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays starting August. I'm not looking at a calendar, but like August sixth or seventh or something like that. So, uh, that services will be off and running very soon. But, um, that's all I have and I did not, I was not at that meeting. I do, uh, I don't have any comments with regards to DPW or the library or, uh, or the historic district commission at this point.
Thank you. Um, Jeff?
Uh, planning board, um, Teague and Vaughn put on a presentation to update our hazard mitigation plan, which started in, our original plan was put into place in 2018 and it needs to be updated every five years, so we're right at that point now. Um, of course, climate change, sea level rise, coastal storms, flooding are our biggest concerns, as we all know. Um, they're working on identifying assets and the mitigation needed to, uh, bring those up to where we need to be. Um, buildings, roadways, culvert, uh, the Lady MS responses and, uh, damage to utilities are some other concerns. Uh, they had a discussion on Sweeney Park. It looks like there's really no viable space left to build onto. It's pretty much small, which we all know. So, any plan moving forward is probably going to look like adapting the space we have now to be more usable and drainage is gonna be the biggest plan there to get water off fields and out of the parking lot. So, uh, that was that. Um, there's a little discussion on driveway and curb cuts, where the DPW falls and where the planning board falls. They had a hearing for special permit to repair the seawall at Six Ashland Ave out here, just basically just replace some what's already there. And, yeah, so.
Anything new at, at the, uh, fact?
I actually have a meeting Thursday morning, so I'm hoping to get some more info there.
Well, just to jump on, uh, Jeff said, I know that, uh, the Sweeney Park has been on the agenda a couple times with the, the cops and rec. Nate's been working mostly. If there's a way to think of it, to make it more, uh, user-friendly for folk and, and the high school thing. Also, we, uh, we're going to put on con shortly. There's gonna be a new, they want for a new scoreboard up at Coach Field Field. So, that gives the sub-bas team's, you know, the, uh, playing on the real field. Plus, it'll be, um, it's gonna be electron, uh, it's gonna be, uh, remote, so that when these, uh, when other groups rent the field, they'll be able to use the scoreboard as well.
Where's it gonna go?
Uh, it's gonna go where it was before.
Where it was.
Remember where it was and they're gonna put it back up and then oops, something happened to it.
Under the path.
Uh, I think it's, uh, so the problem is that although the footings are still there, they might have to just start to go. And so it'll go back to where it was, so it's somewhere, you know, somewhere off more than. Uh, successful fourth of July. Thought it was successful, huh? From what I can remember. Yes, we did. We had a plenty, we did have leftover. We gotta slow John's kid down.
Well, he said there was enough candy, so I know what my marching orders.
I mean, I actually ran one to try to catch up to that one. And I almost spilled my drinks. Uh, the, uh, so that's that. I've got, uh, DPA meeting on Wednesday night. On con. There was some issue, but everything's, yeah, everything's good.
Um, so we had a conversation with the downtown improvement projects committee at our last meeting, and so they have had a meeting since then and have, uh, embraced the task given them to, um, come back with a new charter or an adapted charter based on the feedback that we gave them. Their major themes, um, as to how they're going to attack the, the charter is to definitely, they wanna rebrand the committee itself. Um, in the existing charter, there's a lot of detailed, there are a lot of detailed items that are really DPW responsibilities, so they wanna remove those from their charter. Um, they wanna, um, add some focus around the, um, uh, how to appoint members, you know, maybe having some three-year staggered appointments, et cetera. So, the whole committee isn't turning over every year or whatever, or we don't have to reappoint everybody every year. Um, and so they think of themselves as the glue. Um, their major theme is thinking of themselves as the glue, um, or connecting to the downtown, connecting the downtown businesses and the residents together. And if another committee needs to do something in the downtown and they really don't know where to go, um, they could always come to this committee to, um, you know, get their thoughts. So, there, that's kind of the, those are kind of the big themes that they're thinking about. Uh, they don't meet again until September, so, uh, I know they're gonna do a lot through meet, uh, email and, uh, sub, small subcommittee they formed, but I'm not sure if I expect anything from them until they meet again and rather.
You look, puzzle.
Actually, I'm thinking about, uh, Festival by the Seas on Tuesday, I mean, next, uh,
Saturday.
Yeah, we're from Saturday.
Yeah.
Uh, have we done anything about getting a table in a?
Have you?
I haven't done anything. I'll, I'll contact Mike Sterling tomorrow.
Actually, John usually does the, John, you have a sign that we usually put up at Festival by the Sea?
Yes, um, I was gonna send a note to, uh, Debbie. Debbie's in the room, yes.
She's, she's nodding her head.
Yeah, she knows where that is?
Yes, I do.
She knows where it is?
I do.
He's got the actual respite.
And I, I think we have a table top sign that maybe had dealt with like the issue of the moment. Yeah, I guess, uh, we did last year and that was the MBTA. I don't know that we have the issue of the moment because the, the sign is, is generic.
I think, I think Brian's question was, did we request a spot so we have a table to sit at?
That I don't know. Brian, you, you-
I'll, I'll reach out to Mike Sterling, because I did remember that there was talk in one of the packets or something I read about the mermaid.
Yes. Oh, right. The statue.
And that she was gonna set up next to us.
Yeah, I remember that came up in a chamber.
Do we have a space and do we have a space?
Right.
I will check with Mr. Sterling tomorrow if I don't want that.
I, I, I think he is, he has a booth. He has a booth and I'm not sure where he is, but I did see an email in that regard.
And I'll just follow up with Sterling tomorrow. I'll do it now.
Yeah.
So, you'll send a note to us and then we can work schedules as to who's manning the table?
Yes. Humanizing. Who's baying the table?
Sounds good.
Okay. The school committee isn't going to meet until late August. They, they except for a summer retreat and I think I'm gonna let them have their summer retreat in private. The, I was at the finance committee and they, um, went over the, um, financials for the last year and moving money around and questions, why did we end up moving so much money around this year? Um, and, um, part of it is that they don't have, they, their free cash, their cash reserves are lower than they have been in previous years and that's the way those things are normally dealt with. And instead, they actually had, stock had to be pulled out of one budget that was under and put in another budget. And they'd rather not do that anymore. They're, um, working on, um, tracking the spending of the, um, watch service. There are fewer people signed up for a subscription this year than last. Um, and there was discussion about how long do boats last, how long do engines last, what do we do for depreciation and, and, so they're, they're on top of that. Uh, they would like to get a vehicle, um, a vehicle schedule for everybody who has vehicles, including what it is, when it was bought, something about major service. Um, and they have, they are perfectly willing to work on it, but they need to get the information. And so they, they would like to do more specific vehicle tracking.
Shouldn't each department have?
Yeah, I, Andrea and I were at that meeting. Um, there is a fleet schedule. I don't know if the finance committee has ever had a copy of that or if it would, if, you know, it might desire a different format than what we have. But we have to maintain a fleet schedule for insurance, uh, so.
You can get, I mean, I don't know if we have enough to do it, but you can get fleet software that'll track it right down to every oil change, every-
Right.
When it's, you know, everything.
Right. And I think we, I think we do that in-house. I think, uh, either Nate or DPW does, uh, does a lot of that, uh, in-house. Obviously, the finance committee's not worried about those, like, very specific details, but more, I think that what they were looking for is a higher level of, um, you know-
Purchases and-
The, yeah. You know, the fleet, the year that it was purchased, you know, major, yeah, major repairs.
Can't really-
Expected life, you know? Um, estimated cost of replacement, you know, stuff like that.
Something that came up, which I hadn't thought about, is that since we've worked so hard to staff the police department with the hopes of eliminating much of the overtime, the policemen aren't making as much as they used to. And there was a concern that that would make our police department less attractive as an employer, um, than other departments where, um, particularly senior officers have an opportunity to take on a lot of overtime. And, uh, hmm, that's-
Yeah, we, we-
That would sort.
That wasn't, yeah, that wasn't necessarily a comment, you know, that came from our police department. It was just, uh, part of the discussion about, you know, wanting to try to shrink the amount of OT and how there's the other side of that coin is that, you know, it's-
Yeah, we, we've been so busy worrying about the financial impact of overtime that, that
I know some departments have trouble filling slots, though, so.
As far as-
Where's, where's that?
The detail work and stuff?
Yeah.
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 I don't think we pay as much, I think I detail, uh, expenditures or references in responding towns that we call. And so if you could work in Gloucester or work in Manchester for a shift, you gotta go Gloucester. Detail work.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know.
Because they can work anywhere, you know.
Yeah, on detail work, right. And.
So I guess you gotta find that sweet spot between having, having something for the guys, but not chasing people to fill slots either.
Yeah, after police reform, maintaining staff, retaining talent has become more of a challenge. The chief footage spoke about it. The fire department has the same challenges too, but especially after police reform, where, you know, reserve officers are required to have the same type of training as a full-time officer. You know, it has caused such a change in keeping, keeping people on board and, and officers moving to other towns. I know, you know, in my past experience that when officers have decided to leave for another town, OT availability has, has been a topic that has come up in the past, you know, or what those detail rates, you know, you know, contract obviously is a big piece of it. But, so we were just kind of talking about finding that sweet spot. You know, if you push too far this way, it could have a negative, an unintended negative impact as well.
Can we raise, because a lot of the detail work is paid by, by the private contract, right? In national grid or whatever.
Right.
We could look at maybe raising, I don't see it something like that.
It'll be part of contract negotiations when the time comes, I'm sure.
I mean, you look at, every time they publish, everyone's, especially police and fire, mostly police, they make more money on overtime.
Yeah.
And detail work than they do on their base salary.
That's the other, that's the other caveat, I guess, when you're in those negotiations is, you know, the detail rate is one of those things that may not cost the town too much money. But if the detail rate becomes so far out of line with the OT rate, you know, your officers are deciding between whether to pick up a shift or work a detail. So you have to kind of think about all those dynamics when you're in the, when you're in those negotiations.
I'm so glad that it's your.
Good luck.
Okay, there was a mention of a review by the D O R and D L S. And my notes aren't very good. We didn't last in 2012 and the finance committee would suggest that we bring in the D O R and do another overall.
Right, so divisional local services will perform a financial management review or overview of municipality. It does require select boards' vote to request, request it. Manchester by the Sea had it done in 2012, so it's, it's time to have it updated. It's not an audit. It's, it doesn't come with, you know, action items that you have to do or else you'll be negatively affected in your, your audit later down the road. It's, it's just recommendations. And actually, a lot of the recommendations in the 2012 report have already been taken care of. So it would make sense to bring them in, talk to, I talked to D L S and they, they're probably a few months of a, a few months of a wait right now with other towns already in line. So we may bring that.
Could you put that on our action item for our next meeting?
Is that a request that has to come from the pin con plus, or do we just make?
We spoke about it. They were all on board in that meeting. I felt like they were all on board of like, yeah, we should, let's. A lot of them haven't, hadn't actually.
Read it.
Read it or seen it because it predates a lot of the members on the committee, I think, so.
I think everybody.
They were, they were in favor of.
Every term I can only have, but I think it came in in 2012.
Alright, so we just, just have to put a gender and vote on it.
Yeah.
I got it on that.
Thank you. There was a report on the DPW which was peculiar. And, and I guess I would turn to you, Tony, and say, what's the progress on the culvert? What's the possibility that, when and can that work be done? And what are we going to do about the rotunda? This is lost funding.
Yeah, we have, so I had that on my town administrative report. I can speak to it now.
Just save it for.
Really was just gonna talk, talk about it briefly anyways. But with the culvert project, we are dealing with two different short-term issues right now with our chapter 91 license and also with MIPA. It was a 10-person appeal filed with MIPA. So we have a call with Tori from the director of MIPA tomorrow at noon. And we'll be issuing a response to that appeal by Wednesday. So we still have, it, it's hard to say really how the timing of that will work out. Nate also had a call with the BRIC program staff to talk about potential ability to perhaps procure materials and draw down that grant if it doesn't seem like we're gonna get through the permitting process to actually get into construction before the grant expiration date and if that sounds like it's, it's possible. So we're really just evaluating all of our options to keep this project moving forward.
The finance committee is scheduled to meet next on the third Wednesday in October. So you won't hear from me about that for a while. I also went to a board of health meeting. The first issue was of the gates and they appeared with a lawyer who made a much clearer case of what was going on and what could be done. And the board of health voted not to condemn the building, but to require bi-weekly reports on the progress. And I'm sure everybody will be driving by and looking at it. But there were roofers there. Yep.
I mean, so I, I think, I think the threat of condemnation got their attention
to the point where they're getting the, the help they need. And the next part of that meeting was about the Health and Human Services Department and what they, the Health and Human Services would affect really the, the town employees in the Health Department and not so much the Board of Health. And the Board of Health doesn't seem to recognize that completely. And, and it may be easier to deal with them if we, if it's made clear to them that, that it is not intended that the head of Health and Human Services will be making policy decisions for the Board of Health, but they will be making policy decisions for the use of the town employee. And it was a long discussion of that left before it was over. Probably was that.
I, I committed to working with the Board of Health on making some adjustments to the job description to alleviate their concerns. The, with, with this issue plus Nancy's expected retirement and the rec department being in the middle of their season, I also let them know that we're holding on the start of this for a couple of months. So we have some time now to kind of work out some of those issues and hopefully move in the right direction.
That's all I have on that. Next three-year consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that people would like to actually discuss?
Would the reappointments are on the consent agenda? Yes. I'd like to discuss that.
Okay. Is there a move to approve of the other items on the consent agenda?
Move to select but approve the consent agenda minus. Annual. The annual appointment.
John?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes. Okay, the reappointments committee, committees and boards, which is specifically. Here somewhere, yes. The three-year terms on the Affordable Housing Trust, is there any discussion on them? Is there a move to approve the terms for the Affordable Housing Trust?
So moved.
John?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes. And the three-year terms on the Board of Health, I assume there's some discussion there.
So it came to my attention and I, that members of the Board of Health might have spoken to some of the town employees about the potential restructuring of the Health and Human Services position. I don't have any firsthand knowledge, so I'm hearing this on a second hand. I don't know if other board members may have heard something, but I just feel before we reappoint members of the Board of Health, it's gotta be crystal clear that if that happened, that was not okay. But if anybody else has any information to share about that.
If we appoint somebody and they do something that we consider egregious, what is our ability to remove them?
I, I, I have to triple, I have to double-check with legal, but I believe you have the ability to rescind an appointment.
I've also heard of a member of the Board of Health walking into a business, acting as a health agent, asking questions of employees, asking questions and inspection. And again, that's beyond their, that's a public, not a member of the Board of Health. Right? So, yeah, I think that as long as they stay in the lane, you know, right? I want to, we saw signs of a kinder, kinder, gentler. It was, you know, it was at the executive, when we were executive session, it was somewhat contentious, but I think that some cooler heads prevailed. And then I was very pleased to hear these cooler heads prevailed again last Thursday. You forget that just because you can do something, you don't have to do it. And that we all serve, oh, we're here for the, the residents of Manchester, not to be adversarial with them, but to work with them, okay? And let's not forget that they're appointed members and they serve at the, at the pleasure of this. I think that sometimes that's lost. That's my, my sense.
Jeff?
I, I mean, like Kathy saying, I've heard a lot of things, but it's secondhand. I don't have any proof or any, you know, which way to go with that. But I think all our boards need to be working together. And if people are willing to do that, then, then that's good. And this constant friction and back and forth needs to stop. We need to all be working together to move this town forward. It shouldn't be one board, you know, on their own playing field and we're all over here. We need to be all working together.
Right, we're all each independent boards. We're independent of the planning board. We're independent of the Board of Health, et cetera. But that doesn't mean we don't work together.
Right.
Right.
The common goal.
The common goal. Yeah, I just, I'm wondering if we need to have, you know, I know you're doing the MOU about that specific position, but do we need to have an expectation-setting meeting or discussion with the Board of Health? And I agree that the last meeting we had with them, the joint meeting, I thought went very well. But like I said, we have some unsubstantiated rumors. We want to make sure that those things are really not happening because they're not appropriate for a board. And sometimes board members need to understand the distinction between serving on a board and being a town employee and that they're not the same thing.
Just to be clear, right now I'm committed to potentially making changes to the job description for the team leader position. I don't think that we feel the MOU was violated in any way. However, in this effort to try to work better together, maybe the two boards, you know, opening up the MOU and maybe making some changes makes sense, but I think we'll get there down the road.
I think this is, this is a separate discussion though from the MOU. It's about the Board of Health and them understanding the boundaries of their responsibilities as a board and not acting as employees or directly.
Confronting?
That's probably the best word. Confronting a town employee that is not even remotely under their purview. So I, I do feel it's a little bit of a separate issue than the specificity around the MOU.
I, I will say, at the, you know, after you had left in, in the meeting I was in Thursday morning with the Board of Health, it, it seemed that they agree with to that common goal, that we need to do better for the community to come together and, and do what's right. So I, I got the sense from the Board of Health that they were open to, you know, heading in the right direction. And I spoke with the chairman today and I'm gonna be speaking with him again later this week. So just, you know, adding, I think, more communication and probably be attending their next Board of Health meeting. I think it's next week.
Twenty-fourth of eight thirty. Not that I'm paying attention.
So, yeah, I, I, I think the message, I will relay those messages as well.
I think that would be important.
And I, I think they understand.
Okay.
After this discussion, is there a motion on the three-year terms with the Board of Health? Would we consider continuing to allow the current incumbents to serve with the intention of coming back in a month to review the situation?
Does that, does that help you in your negotiation discussions on the Board of Health? As you relay our concerns.
Does it help you or hurt you?
Yes, I guess that was better way of putting it. I'm not here to make you jump hard.
No, I think, I think if you're comfortable making the appointments, I think that shows a, a sign of stepping, you know, in the right direction. And like I said, I think that if, if things are, don't head in that direction, the board has, you know, should have the ability to rescind appointments if that, that becomes necessary. And I think, I think, you know, kind of respectfully, you know, hanging the appointments over their head may have a, a negative effect towards moving in the right direction.
Yeah, I can see that.
Alright, I move.
Second.
I need to finish what I was gonna say.
Are you really gonna say?
I'm, okay, fine, be second to my name. God, you want to go home, don't you?
John?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Anne says yes.
These are for one, these are for me.
They make them all on one.
Yeah, you're nauseous, have you tried them?
I got them all. Yeah, it takes for a boat.
Following the discussion of board members' solace in classes, then we have an administrative report.
Sure, so it's been a very busy few weeks. Been continuing to meet with staff and committees and members of committees. Been continuing to meet with staff and committees and members of committees. Attended meetings with the planning board, with the finance committee, Board of Health, Mason, the Masons regarding condo docs related to the senior center. I'll be meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust. I see CONCOM and ZBA are meeting this week, so I'm going to try and attend those meetings as well.
Do you need a letter of inspection to your wife?
She, she understands what we signed up for. This is what happens, you know, when you first start, it's really important to be present and to introduce yourself and make the rounds. So I want to make sure that I'm doing that, making that a priority. Meeting with the Harbor Master tomorrow, later this week. I'm, I'm on the MMA's Energy Policy Committee. We have a meeting later this week that I'll be attending that as well. We have our first, my first department head meeting. Next week, we have a meeting with Senator Tarr related to highway safety and wrong way drivers. And then, of course, the Festival by the Sea in a couple of weeks, a couple weekend, a couple Saturdays from now. The Republic strike obviously has been taking up a lot of time. I really want to commend Chuck and Nate and the DPW, as well as the admin staff and Tiffany for, you know, how much attention they've put towards this. They've been feeling a lot of calls. It's, it's really frustrating. We've had a call with Republic almost daily. There's 14 communities, about over 400,000 residents affected by this. We so badly want to provide as much information as possible to the public, but things are changing daily due to backup crews, you know, simply not being able to get out of the facility to head towards whatever route that they're planned to do or wait times getting in and out of drop-off facilities. And they're at, they're expecting to have additional resources in the, by the end of this week as far as manpower comes. It doesn't sound like the two parties, Republic and the Teamsters, are close to finalizing an agreement on their contract. So I do think we're going to be dealing with this for a little bit longer, hopefully. We, the 14 community mayors and town managers urged them today that they commit to sitting down on a daily basis. They met Friday and their next meeting isn't until Wednesday. And, you know, we made it clear to them that that's not, that's not good enough. We want both the Teamsters and Republic to be negotiating on a daily basis. We've had, our TBW, as you recall, stepped up on day one, which was July 1st, to help with curbside collection. Since then, we've opened expanded hours at the transfer station for the last two weeks. We may be doing that again this week. And Chuck and I are in discussions about, you know, what other supplementary services that we can provide to kind of fill the, fill the gap. But they did inform us that they would, they would not be able to collect recycling this week. Now, they informed us that two weeks ago, but were able to actually pick up recycling. And of course, instead of just being Monday and Tuesday, they were here Wednesday and Thursday and sometimes Friday. So we're, we're also, you know, trying to make it a priority that they pick up dumpsters, you know, the town dumpsters. But also we're trying to get a feel for private contracts with Republic. You know, our restaurants, multifamily housing units, trying to understand what the need is there too, to make that a priority for Republic as well. So we will likely be putting out more information tomorrow. You know, it's also a tough balance because the reverse 911 calls, you know, we want to try and give as much information as possible. But at the same time, I feel like residents are kind of getting sick of the reverse 911 calls. So the message really is that, you know, you should put your trash and recycling out on Monday or Tuesday, depending on your route. And if it's missed, let us know and put it back out the next day. And if it's, if, if it's not collected, you have Wednesday transfer station and possibly Friday again as well as Saturday. So if it doesn't get collected, please, you know, bring, bring down, bring the uncollected trash or recycling to the transfer station.
How is the transfer station being dealt with?
Same, so we're, we've been lucky. Not every town is the same. Not every town has the same contract. On these group calls, it's very general discussion. Chuck, that's why I got to commend Chuck, you know, he has a great relationship with the supervisor staff at Republic. And he's been able to get a lot more, I think, out of Republic than some of our neighboring communities. So he's been able to get them to come and replace, you know, the, the dumpsters, you know, at the transfer station. And he's been working with Black Earth to staff it. You know, some of, some of our neighboring communities have real public health concerns with overflowing dumpsters, you know, Beverly, Gloucester, Danvers, when they're, where their downtown areas are really hurting. There was a dumpster fire in Danvers last week. So they, they have, legally, they have kind of a different angle of approach with Republic related to the public health side. Luckily, we haven't had much of that. But we do want to, we, we may not be aware of some of the private contracts.
I do know I have five residents dumping into, from some of the private dumpsters. Chuck, they took care of that and now they bought their dumpster. And that's not unheard of, and I'm sure if people just.
It looks as if there's a certain amount of private stuff that gets into the dumpsters at that point.
Yeah, I, residents are, you know, doing, trying to find ways to solve the problem themselves. Rather than put them in the dumpsters, please bring, bring it to the transfer station on Wednesday or Saturday and possibly, you know, Fri, we may be opening up on Friday again as well.
Would it be possible to extend the hours beyond?
Yes, it is true.
We, we did extended hours. I think we opened it earlier. I don't know if it was.
Opened at 7:30 in the morning, I think. That was like, that looked pretty early to me.
It was pretty, I, when, at first, when we had the extended hours, it wasn't as busy as we expected. I think this weekend was pretty busy, though. And then I had the Culver project, which I already reported on, so.
Further discussion on adjournment? Okay, John?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Bye, John.
Thank you.
Bye, John.